Lights convene the city council meeting for April, August 3rd.
I ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the roll.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Seven, here, present.
We have a quorum. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is for anyone in the audience who would like to present anything to the city council that's not necessarily on our agenda. And seeing that only Mr. Manos is out there, I will move on to the approval of minutes for July 20th, 2020. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
That takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I received an email from Mrs. Kathy Conley from the 8300 block of High Point Circle with regards to concern of running the Darien Dash, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? That takes us to the.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I received a communication from Andrew Kelly in my ward, just wanting to thank the entire city council for their act of patriotism and respect for our veterans and senior citizens and wearing masks at the meeting last time and continuing to wear masks. He would like to provide a quick note for reading at the next meeting, which is tonight. Wearing a mask, please remind our residents it's important that placing their mask over their nose. I know this should go without saying, but in order for the mask to be effective in protecting our veterans and senior citizens, it has to be worn properly in accordance with the recommended CDC guidelines. I hope you are staying safe and doing well. Thank you, City Council.
Anything else, Mary?
That's it.
All right. Takes us to the mayor's report, and I've got a few items, even though there's nothing on our agenda. As many of you might remember, last year we gave considerable thought to adding an item to our budget. The idea was to defer the cost of cameras, outdoor cameras, for people who would then register those cameras with the city, with the police department, for the police use if there was something that went on in that area. We budgeted $10,000, and when we cut our $3.6 million from the budget, we cut that $10,000. I'm happy to say that Chief Thomas, through the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, applied for a grant called Powering Safe Communities, which is sponsored by Commonwealth Edison. And that is a $10,000 matching grant, which means we would get $10,000 if we match $10,000. And what we're going to be doing is we're going to be bringing that to you guys. We are developing the particulars, how much we would reimburse each family, the type of camera, the quality of the camera. There's some details there. We're going to make it fairly simple, but when we have that, we're going to be bringing it back to you because we're going to ask you to approve a matching $10,000 to the $10,000 that Commonwealth Edison is going to be giving us.
So instead of $10,000 worth of cameras, it'll be $20,000.
$20,000 worth of cameras.
$10,000 match.
Yeah. $20,000 worth of cameras.
Good job.
Eric.
I knew I had residents, we had talked about this before, ask if we go ahead with a program like this, if they've already purchased a camera, are they going to qualify for some type of reimbursement back?
It would be, as of, if you guys approve it beginning of September, it'll be purchases from that point on.
Okay, so you don't go, we don't go back and give credit?
There's something in the grant that prohibits that.
Okay.
My next announcement is the Darien Chamber of Commerce has informed the city, they will not be, will not be conducting their annual Darien Dash, which was scheduled for August 23rd. The chamber felt that considering the upswing in COVID-19 cases, it was in the best interest of all, including the participants, to cancel the event. And the chamber is discussing the possibility of conducting a virtual dash later this year, possibly in September. In my conference call this morning with the DuPage County Public Health Department, there were several items noted that I wanted to share with you this evening. I have received emails from residents asking for additional information. And while I believe the city puts out considerable COVID-19 information through our social media outlets, I chose the following items, which I feel are key to our understanding of where we are as a community. And please note that any figures I give you are simply a snapshot of where we are today. The positivity rate in DuPage County is currently below 5%, and in Darien, we currently, as of today, have 177 cases, 184 cases as compared to 176 last week. There are currently no hotspots in Darien or in DuPage County. I was asked to identify hotspots. I had a resident ask that. There are no hotspots in Darien that the health department, the health department is monitoring outbreaks in warehouses, businesses, and factories, but they're not seeing, they're seeing maybe 10 or five, which do not qualify those to be hotspots. Contact tracing is taking place. DuPage County has over 80 people involved in contact tracing, and they're looking to hire up to 111 people who will be engaged in contact tracing. When they receive a diagnosis, they begin the procedure of contacting the individual to determine each of their contacts over the past six to 10 days. So they, and they are almost all caught up in the cases that they've had identified. The average age of those who are testing positive has dropped from age 46 to age 38. The highest percentage of people testing positive are people in the 30 to 39 age category. In Region 8, which includes DuPage, Kane, and a small portion of Cook, all hospitals in this region report that there are 90, currently 97 COVID hospitalizations. 84 are in non-ICU settings. 13 are in ICU beds, and five are on ventilators. Karen Ayala, the executive director, noted that because we are seeing an increase in positive tests among younger people, they are anticipating that these individuals may be passing the virus onto older, more vulnerable individuals. And in four to six weeks, we could see an upswing in hospitalizations, which is not a positive. As we anticipate the start of the school year, we will see schools developing different models for instruction. Karen Ayala noted that the best way to prevent the spread of virus in schools is to contain the spread of the virus within the community. As members of the Darien community, we must all realize the importance of our individual role in controlling community spread. And currently, we are not doing as well at containing the spread because our numbers are definitely going up. And what's happening is people in that 30 to 39 age group may not be experiencing symptoms, but they're getting, they're passing that on to those of us who are in the more vulnerable age group. And they feel that in four to six weeks, we may see an increase in hospitalizations as a result of that. She noted that it is critical to remember that we are at a critical point in our fighting this virus, which is we are not pitting public health against business. Our enemy is the virus, and we must increase our vigilance in fighting the virus. And then she noted that there are vaccine trials currently underway at Northwestern, Rush, and the University of Chicago labs and hospitals. So I think it's really, really critical for Darien residents, and all residents, to know that wearing masks, social distancing are very critical. And if we're concerned about our children going back to school and what they may encounter in school, one of the ways we help our children is by practicing social distancing, washing our hands, and wearing our masks. And finally, and this is good news, on Thursday, July 29, 2020, Illinois State Senator John Kern confirmed that the week before, Sterigenics officially requested withdrawal of all IEPA permits and pending permit applications. And the IEPA formally confirmed that withdrawal. This action formalizes the permanent closure of the Willbrook location, and that is great news. State Senator Kern thanked everyone who fought for clean air and assisted in ridding our community of the carcinogen known as ETO. For those involved in this movement, and there are a number of groups, this is very good news. And as a tribute to all who worked not only to develop an awareness of this issue, but to work toward the closing of the Willbrook plant. Our Darien City government and I worked with Mayor Frank Trilla of Willbrook, Gary Grass of Burr Ridge, and representatives of Hinsdale and other communities in developing strategies for concluding this problem. I am proud of the efforts of our city and all the individuals who work so diligently on this issue, and the Stop Sterigenics Group is included in that group. Our actions demonstrated how municipalities, working together, could better serve the needs of their residents. So I'm very proud of the work of, and it takes a number of people to do that. The Stop Sterigenics Group, they raised the awareness that was needed. Mitchell. The municipality became involved. Mayor Trilla did a wonderful job leading that group. But this government, Mayor Weaver started it last year when she was still mayor, getting us involved. We continued it under my leadership and your leadership as a council, and we won that battle. So you guys should be very proud. And I hope this is the end. I believe this is the end, but I just wanted to mention that for the residents. That's a good thing. So that's my mayor's report for tonight. Joe.
Question, Mayor. The 176 count in Darien, I know you and I had a conversation, oh, maybe a month or so ago, is all 176 residents live in the city of Darien? Because we talked about instances where they might be, you know, in assisted living facility, but had a Darien address, and they're counting that as a, as a.
If an individual is in an assisted living facility, and they're a Darien, and they're there temporarily, they're in a rehab, like, you know, they're having surgery and they come out, and they're in a facility like that, and they have a Darien address, they're Darien. If they're long-term, memory care, something like that, even though they may live in Darien, it gets recorded as part of the long-term care facility.
Okay.
Any questions for me on any of those? I know it was a lot. I apologize, but I wanted to update you on all those items. City Clerk's report, Joanne.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator's report, Brian.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Department head informations and questions. Any questions for Chief Thomas or for Mr. Gombek?
Chief, I, and I know you kind of mentioned when you first walked in, but do we know anything at all about what happened at 71st and Cass yesterday?
No. I, no, everything that transpired there is DuPage County. So when they call for an assist, we respond. Then they will put our personnel where it will best serve their needs. Our personnel were perimeter people, meaning that they were stationed in areas near the location to block vehicle and pedestrian traffic going towards the situation. And anything else that occurred would have been within DuPage.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Not a problem.
Anything else for the chief?
Michael, I have something for Dan, and I know, Dan, this isn't our purview, but Plainfield and Route 83, I know I've asked you this question before, in the spring, they started working on it and put down like a base coat, and then just seemed to have stopped for the last several months. Any idea on what's the status of that?
It's been resurfaced. It's done.
It's done? Oh, today?
No, last Tuesday.
When?
Last Tuesday.
Next, oh, next week.
Last, last Tuesday it was completed, the final coat.
It was?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the only problem right now is there's a traffic signal. They're still working on a traffic signal and one of the mast arms. So we've been trying to stay up on top of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything, anything else? Thank you. Takes us to Treasurer's report, Michael, warrant 20210207.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm requesting council's approval tonight of warrant 202107 and the amount of $93,047.94 from listed funds payroll for the period ended July 30th and the amount of $248,631.17 for a total be approved of $341,679.11.
Motion to approve. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments for the treasurer? If none, the roll.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant's been approved. It takes us to standing committee reports. Do any of the aldermen have reports for the council from their committees? Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The police committee will have their next meeting on Monday, August 17th at 6:00 PM, and the police training room across to parking lots, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Municipal Services Committee will be held on August 17th also at 6:30 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. It's a rescheduled meeting. Joanne.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Sullivan.
The Administrative Finance Committee will be held on Tuesday, September 8th, because Monday is September 7th, and it's Labor Day, and it'll be held at 6:00 PM in council chambers prior to the city council meeting.
Thank you. Michael?
And the police pension fund will have their quarterly review this Thursday night, August the 6th, in the police training room at 7:00 PM, although formally, it's a Zoom meeting, but there is sufficient capacity for 16 people to attend. Usually, we don't have much of a turnout, but if you want to attend by Zoom, just please contact City Hall. They can give you the Zoom contact information. Or if you want to review the materials, they should be in the city council's meeting and agenda packet.
Thank you. Mary, I thought Economic Development was meeting next Wednesday on the.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. Yes. The Economic Development Committee is meeting next Wednesday. I believe it's the 12th of, yes, Wednesday, the 12th of August at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
They are, by the way, they are preparing a yearly assessment of their work, and I've seen a rough draft of it, and they will be presenting to the city council when that rough draft is completed of their achievements over the last year, just to let you know. And I don't know if they'll be ready for the 17th of August, but they might be ready for the first meeting in September.
Right. I sense they'll be preparing it to present in September.
Thank you. All right. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. And unless anybody has any questions regarding that, we'll move on to old business. And there being none, we'll move to the consent agenda, and I'll read those items. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of office equipment from Midwest Office Interiors to replace current equipment in use by the police department, using Department of Justice, DOJ award money in the amount of $16,995.71. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of one dual-purpose K-9 unit and a four-week training class from Northern Michigan K-9 Incorporated, using Department of Justice award money in the amount of $11,500. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien. And item D, consideration of a motion to approve, consideration motion to approve a motion to approve the expenditure of budget of funds to purchase professional consulting services from Resource Management in the amount of $9,225. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Belzak, and the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The consent agenda is approved under new business. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Section 3-3-7-1C Class A license in Section 3-3-7-5C Class E license of the Darien City Code. This is to create a new Class A and to remove a Class E. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower. Discussion. For the audience, this is for the Darien pantry. If none, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion passes. The item B, consideration of a motion, and just, the next three items all deal with the sign and the easement, so we'll take them one at a time. Consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a plat of easement for a landscape feature northwest corner of Cass Avenue and Plainfield Road at 7532 Cass Avenue, known as PIN number 0928402-025. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Belzak.
Nay.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
No.
Kenny.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Five ayes and two nay.
Five to two. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution for a landscape feature agreement and a dedicated easement at the northwest corner of 7532 Cass Avenue, again, PIN 0928402025. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
No.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Nay.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Five ayes and two nay.
Motion is approved. Our final item, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to reimburse 7532 Cass Avenue LLC in an amount, not to say 22,750, for the construction of the landscape feature located at 7532 Cass Avenue. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. Questions or comments? Alderman Belzak.
Yeah, just a quick question. It states city of Darien on there, and then in another spot, it says, "Welcome to the city of Darien," and I believe I overheard you saying it was going to be "welcome to." And I'm just curious as to why we would put a "welcome to" sign in the middle of Darien when not on a border. It seems to me, if we're going to do it, I personally would prefer the city of Darien to be on there rather than a "welcome to." But that's my opinion.
I have no problem. Doesn't have to say "welcome to."
No, that could be changed. So it was just a difference of a couple dollars. So that could be adjusted pending with the city council upon approval recommends. So right now, it says city of Darien. It was supposed to say, "Welcome to the city of Darien." So for clarification, is there a consensus on city of Darien or welcome to the city of Darien?
I think Alderman Belzak makes a valid point.
I agree.
I do, too.
Okay.
So we'll leave it as city of Darien then.
That's fine. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, as, I just want to thank Dan for frankly not spending any money on the diagrams. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. As I indicated last meeting, I just feel it's financially irresponsible to spend money on any sign that we could have gotten for free, and frankly, electronic sign. We would have gotten two of the eight advertising slots out of there. One of those we could have given to a charitable organizations and stuff. So we really slapped them in the face and walked away from that. So I'm definitely opposed for spending any money on this type of sign.
Okay. Anything else? If none, the roll.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
No.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Nay.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Five ayes and two nay.
Motion is approved. Takes us to questions and comments of a general nature. Do any of the aldermen have anything they'd like to share with the council?
I'd like to welcome Mitchell back.
Mitchell, yeah.
Hey, Mitchell.
All right, Mitchell. It's your first post-COVID, not post-COVID, but first COVID incident. Nice to have you, Mitchell. Who do you got with you, grandma? Okay.
Drag grandma out again, huh?
Alderman Belzak.
So in the last two months or so, there's been an issue in my ward regarding chickens, and someone having chickens and other people being opposed to that. I'm not sure what the city stance is on that. I just received another telephone call today asking about why these people are allowed to have chickens. Now, I understand, our code is silent as to that, and as long as they don't create a nuisance, it's not a problem. However, I have done a little research on my own and found that many municipalities have ordinances regarding it. And I think it might be wise for us to look into that and decide whether we want to specifically have an ordinance in regard to that, because right now, in theory, unless they became a nuisance, a person could have an unlimited amount of chickens in their backyard. So I'm just saying, I think city should look in at other municipalities' ordinances regarding that and see if it makes sense for us.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, according to code, it's okay to have chickens, but it's not okay to have a rooster.
I'd have to double-check again on a rooster, but I believe the rooster could be kept, provided that there's, he doesn't, you know, whatever they do at 6:00 in the morning, if you want to say.
Our ordinance is actually silent in regard to that. And the rooster, there was a rooster at this premises that I'm talking about that isn't there anymore. And she was cited with a noise violation, not anything else. So rather than go down this path again, I'm thinking it might be wise for us to look at actually putting in an ordinance. I saw, and the only reason this happened is because when I was contacted by someone, they said, "We already had an ordinance," and I go, "No, we don't." And I looked it up, and she was unfortunately looking at Darien, Wisconsin's ordinance.
It happened.
But I looked at it also, and it makes a lot of sense in what they have in their ordinance. They also require a permit. And if you have neighbors that are against it, that I believe it said 51% of the people enjoying properties or more are against it, then you can't, you won't be permitted a permit. And I think that kind of makes sense, and it's kind of all about being a good neighbor, too.
Tom, is, were one of those phone calls regarding a home on Seminole?
Mm-hmm.
All right, because I received a phone call from a resident who wanted to maintain good relationships with the people who had the chicken. And she was looking for, she said, "I called the Darien police. They came out, and they said all they could do is do it, the rooster had to be crowing."
Right.
For them to do something. And it was just simply a noise ordinance.
No, she did, it's the same resident, and she did mention to me that she spoke with you regarding this already.
Mr. Gombek, how would you want, would you want to handle this again?
Yeah, I think for, first of all, maybe we should provide a general summary of local ordinances. We could look at the one, Darien, Wisconsin, and bring it back to city council under the director's report, and then we could have some further direction on whether or not this should go back to the committee to be considered as an ordinance or not. That'd be my suggestion.
I know that, I've received phone calls. I know there were a lot of people in Darien who have chickens. I have a good friend who's got neighbors to his one side who's got chickens, and neighbors on the other side who have chickens. Mary?
I know it's gotten very popular. I referred somebody over to you, Lester. I don't know if they ever reached out to you. They live in your ward that had a neighbor that, same thing, they did not want to, you know, it to come between them in terms of friendship, but the chickens were, you know, and they were getting, they had a lot of chickens. I know, we looked into getting my dad some chickens, because, you know, he's an old Irish guy and a farmer at heart. And in Orland Park, I think you're only allowed to have two. So there's very strict guidelines in his community.
Alderman Belzak, thank you for bringing it up, because I've got, had a communication regarding that, and I forgot to mention. regarding that, and I forgot to mention it tonight, and I'm not going to mention the person's name for the same reason. But I've, but I've had three people, you know, call on one resident, you know, within my ward, and I'm going to, I'm going to leave that alone.
John, sir, what was the issue with that resident? Was it noise, or?
No, the amount.
The amount, okay.
Apparently, it was up to 20.
Jesus.
Right, and so like, Darien, Wisconsin has a limit of four female chickens.
That's Wisconsin.
That's Wisconsin. But I'm just saying.
Right.
When I looked at it, it kind of, it made sense that maybe we should, you know, there was also requirements on keeping the pen clean and not letting them run in your backyard. They need to be confined. And all those things make a lot of sense to me, because right now, we're at risk that, that those things aren't happening.
Tom, you think that resident would be happy for the time being knowing that we were going to explore other ordinances and possibly discuss it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Alderman Clistic.
I was just going to mention, I have an aunt that lives in Texas, and I mentioned one time that her town has a chicken coop competition. So whoever has the best-looking chicken coop gets some, like, award from the city. So there's a way to turn this into a positive if you want to.
We include that for.
Yeah. Chicken coop standards, right?
I do know of three families that did, got, they call them COVID chickens. They literally got chickens during the COVID time, just to, you know.
Yeah.
If you're home a lot, get your chickens.
If you, if you really want to experience farming in the Darien area, come down Kearney Road, and right as you approach my house, there's a five-acre parcel of property called the Honeybee Farm with a llama, several horses, goats, chickens, roosters, the whole menagerie is there. And they back right up to beautiful Darien.
It's unincorporated down at its grove, right?
Mm-hmm.
Unincorporated, so there's nothing we could do about it.
Darien people are in their backyard.
Mr. Manos.
Oh, man. Incorporated.
Lester had a question.
We'll let John talk first.
I don't want to interrupt the chicken conversation. I was enjoying that.
Yeah.
But Mayor, City Council, I just wanted to express our gratitude and thank you on behalf of 7532 LLC and the project that we're doing there on the corner. We're trying to do the best job that we can to make that corner really something special, not just for us, but the tenants as well as the community there. So I appreciate all of your support, the mayor, Brian, and certainly Dan and his tireless efforts in keeping everything going there. I think the corner's going to look nice. I love the opportunity of putting the city of Darien sign on there. I think it'll be a big plus to the community and there to the corner. So again, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, John, for sharing the cost, and we're looking forward to that corner being done and improving the sites for everybody.
That's a great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Vaughn?
I was going to say, since we're on the chicken, chicken topic, I know I had some residents that were complaining about the neighbors raising bees next to them, so they can't even sit in their backyard without bees, you know, coming over into their yard, and it just made it very uncomfortable. But I reached out to Dan, I think I reached out to you, Dan, before.
Yes, you did.
We sent someone by the house, but there's nothing we can do, right?
That's correct.
Unless we come up with another ordinance or something that prevents residents from raising bees. So, you know, we might want to take a look at that, too. While we're at it.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, Mayor, is that then added to the list?
Yes, that. Are we going to examine bees as well? Yeah?
If the city council would like, I mean, yes, that's, you know, again, I don't know how, I think the one in your ward is the only one that I've really ever received on beekeeping.
The Honeybee Farm by me has honeybees. They're raising bees, too.
And these were honeybees, was my understanding, too. Again, I think there's a difference, and again, I'm not a, I'm not sure what you call them.
Beekeeper.
Beekeeper specialist, so I'm not sure how many different.
Yeah, I think there were several complaints that came in from, from the same, you know, the same block.